Yeah, I don't know. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first up is a disclosure of conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest on any of the votes we'll take today? Seeing as none, new business, we have Resolution 65, 2020.
A resolution providing for declaration of public emergency, whereas an emergency declaration has been made by the President of the United States in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, and whereas the Governor has declared a state of civil emergency for the entire state of Maine in order to address the threat of COVID-19, to protect the health and welfare of residents and visitors to the state of Maine. The outbreak of COVID-19 is emerging and rapidly evolving, and whereas the necessity for quick actions is whereas the risk of community spread, the Red Hill impacts the life, health, and safety of the public, and now therefore be it resolved by the Department of City that the city council be to a coordinated response to public threat.
Michael?
Bill Lee has advised us that this declaration is needed, even though we did the same thing on Tuesday night, because we're amending the prior declaration that we did Tuesday, he felt it was bad, and I agree, that we start off with another adoption of basically the same declaration.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments? Get a roll call.
Yes. Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Jeff? Council Mayhew?
Yes.
Council Foss?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, next is ordinance number 66, 2020.
An ordinance providing for suspension of the plastic bag ban, whereas the city council declared a citywide emergency in the passage of Resolution 65, 2020, be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Porterville acting as municipal officers as follows: That the city council hereby authorize a suspension of the plastic bag ban passed by ordinance 62-2019 for stores with retail or commercial space at or exceeding 10,000 square feet until the statewide ban goes into effect on January 1, 2021, be it further enacted that shoppers are urged to refrain from using reusable bags or to clean and/or disinfect their reusable bags between uses.
Just to give everybody, because you guys who haven't been in some of the meetings, we had originally talked about 90 days, but I think by yesterday, several of us in the room had had some experiences that slightly changed our outlook in the transferability of COVID-19. And it was essentially what set out the thinking was, I mean, I think certainly there's been some politics around this in the past, but I don't think anybody would accuse Janet Mills of being political on this. I mean, obviously, she's certainly a champion of environmental issues, and she feels that this is a safety measure worth putting to this date. And also, the concern that was raised, another concern, was that if we put a shorter time period, local stores just would have too much uncertainty and they might not act on that. So this just seemed to make sense, I think. And the other thing is, as Council Thomas brought up yesterday, if you want to repeal this earlier, you guys can always act to do that as well. So I think that's important. But in the meantime, it gives us some uniformity with the state of Maine, and it's something that we don't have to think about for a little while.
And just to be clear, the plastic bags that the stores will be distributing, they have, I mean, do they not have that same ability to carry this virus out? The only reason I ask is because we have a lot of stores like Walmart and, you know, Hannaford and, you know, what's it called? You now can go bag your own groceries, and now you're at risk of an infected person going through all of those bags and putting something on those bags versus me controlling what I bring in and bring out?
And you are, but if you look at any of the scientific studies, the reusable bags, people tend not to clean them. I mean, the study, the science is certainly there, and I'm going to kind of fall back on the state a little bit. It looks like New York State, and I just read another town that are yanking theirs because of this. And by majority of people are, there's always a risk. I think this is not, nobody should look at this as like, oh, we're just mitigating all risk, but this is an easy, quick, let's reduce this and make it as slick as possible for the meantime.
I would like to offer amendment.
Okay.
I would like to amend the until the end of emergency. Our authority of this emergency, and I think stick to the priority in
Second.
Thank you. I would argue with that for this reason. Does somebody else want to talk first on the screen? Try to decide who's talking.
I just agree with, I do agree with the amendment just because I've heard from constituents who said that they don't want this plastic bag ban to be, to end or to have the, so I do, that makes me feel more comfortable passing it.
I would encourage people not to pass the amendment for this reason. One, it's that whole element of uncertainty that you're throwing right back at the stores. There's no kind of uniformity. If the emergency lifts in 30 days, do we really think that if it's not safe today, which the studies are now, obviously, there's a national conversation going on about this, that in 30 days it's going to be any safer? At this point, I think that some of these have been just proven to be a little too impetuous. I think, as I said the other day, I think obviously society is moving towards, you know, bringing their usable bags. My family has actually switched to those bags. We're not using them right now. I've been getting paper when I go, so I'm certainly not opposed to that, but I think when we re-enter that on a much more global scale, we're going to be going into it with a little bit more knowledge and finding ways to do so that don't cause unnecessary danger to the public health. And I just think if we line it up with Governor Mills, we're giving that kind of uniformity that certainty to the businesses, because already they don't even know how many bags they can get, because like, between paper and plastic, nationwide, people are dumping the reusables, you know, for this. Yes?
Yeah, I agree with the mayor. I think we should be uniform with the state and Janet Mills and what she has issued till the beginning of the year. The city has the right to go back and lift this if they want to, following any kind of an emergency. We don't know. Everything's an unknown. It's a big question mark as far as how long this emergency is going to go for. I do believe it's more business-friendly, in my opinion, for businesses to be able to ramp up production for these plastic bags and to have them in stock than to say, who's to say this emergency is two months, three months, four months? And, you know, we have to mitigate this as much as possible, and we have to be business-friendly in a sense that allows these businesses to do proper ordering, to do proper stocking, you know, to do proper distribution. I think we have to look at this from a business sense, and in order for us to mitigate this and to keep the risk down by going to plastic bags, we have to be business-friendly about this, folks. We have to let these businesses be allowed to get this stuff in and to be able to distribute and change over. So that's my opinion.
And I would just add, we're obviously, the bag bans are going to go into effect, and you can repeal it later, or you can let it go with the state, but I mean, that's certainly the trend that we're going in anyway. You're setting a date for it to go into effect anyway. But I frankly, from everything I've seen in the last 48 to 72 hours, I am extremely concerned about the safety of the communities, and I just don't want this to be about kind of a political piece to it. The bags are going away. I'm just asking that we make it so that this can happen.
Can I speak?
Yeah, of course.
I'm going to agree with the mayor on this, and I don't think honestly that we should get caught up in this discussion. Let's just take action today to line up with the state deadline. We can always amend this moving forward. This isn't when we get two or three months out from here, things have changed, we can always make a decision then. So I just, we don't need to get caught up in this discussion, in my opinion.
Council Foss?
I echo the mayor's sentiment, Council Mayhew's sentiment, and Council Thomas's. I'll keep it short and sweet to that.
He was the 90-day guy. He was the 90-day guy, too.
You're right, but I did some more research, and, you know, the Governor's office could have picked 90 days herself, but she did not. She moved it out to January of 2021. There must be a very good reason that we are not aware of, and if Governor Mills' office has decided to go that far, as she sits, then I'm all in for that. But just like, just like the mayor and Council Thomas and Council Mayhew said, we can always, we can always dial it back.
Council Frankie? I see you there.
Yes, this is, this is one of the concerns that I have about our emergency meetings. We've let political, the political agenda of people who were opposed to the plastic bag ban have become the driving force, rather than the emergency being the driving force. We've just spent 15 minutes arguing about plastic bag ban while the virus had to stop What we need to do is focus on the emergency. That all for my amendment to keep us focused on the emergency.
Well, I agree with you with that, but that's why I'm following the Governor's lead in my recommendation. Are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Roll call on the amendments.
We've lost the live feed.
Okay.
So get it back in chat.
Should we, should we wait to take votes?
If you want to just hold off.
We should probably wait for the public has access to the vote.
Right, because as soon as Mick started talking on the first of this discussion, it cut out right after that. So I got texts telling me from City Hall that it went out, so I went, and so we can just pause.
I guess nobody didn't have any discussion on this until we come back, please.
Right. Yeah, hold on. Chad, are we live? I don't know if we are. You're going to want to explain that we've been in recess since the last. Thank you that the livestream was lost.
All right, thanks, everybody who might be watching. We took a recess because the livestream lost. Before we got lost, Council Frankie proposed an amendment to the suspension of the bag ban, saying that it would go to the end of the emergency. Councilors Mayhew, Foss, and Thomas were, wanted to leave it as is. Council Frankie explained why he wanted the amendment. We are ready, we are ready to call a roll call, and if you say yes, that means you want Council Frankie's amendment. If you just say no to the roll call, it means you want to pass the ordinance as it is written.
Correct. Okay, Council Morris?
No.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Mayhew?
No.
Council Foss?
No.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council Thomas?
No.
So it's two in favor and four opposed, so the motion fails.
Are we ready to, is everybody ready for a vote on the full ordinance?
Yes.
I'm not convinced that we're actually live. When I click on the link, I'm just getting a recording of what we did before.
There's a new link that was just provided on the city's website, so if you're looking at that old link, it's not active.
We put it up on Facebook, too?
Yes, let me text Sarah, put a link on Facebook. I'll ask her to confirm when she has.
And Patty, I just refreshed everything, and I'm still getting a black screen.
Okay, you don't want to refresh, you want to go to the new link. There's a brand-new link that's been provided.
It went all the way out on, from the website, from the city website.
Okay, because City Hall folks are saying that they can see us now.
They'll send you a link. I was able to do it. I tried it at the Chamber yesterday just to get in, and I was able to like, it's like you want to recruit.
Oh, yes, I can see, I can see everyone from the link on Facebook.
Okay.
Right, but are you seeing a recording or are you seeing us live?
It says live, but it's, well, maybe not.
No.
No, that's a recording.
Okay.
I have new and a brand-new browser from WaddellMaine.gov, and that is
Chad's running, hold on.
Okay.
We're on his website.
Okay, so she's live.
Right on the, right on the first page, Eric. I'm still seeing it on my computer.
Brick, you need to clear your cache.
You are live. Let's carry on.
Okay.
Let's carry on before we lose again. Patty, can I get a roll call on the ordinance?
Yes. Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Mayhew?
Yes.
Council Foss?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
No.
Council Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor and one opposed.
Next is ordinance 67, 2020.
An ordinance providing for amendment to ordinance 64, 2020, whereas the city council declared a citywide emergency in the passage of Resolution 65, 2020, be it hereby enacted by City Council of the City of Porterville acting as municipal officers as follows: That ordinance 64-2020 is amended as follows. The following language is struck-out language: That the city council hereby authorizes a subcommittee of the city council be created consisting of the mayor, three counselors to be appointed by the city council chair to have the authority to meet with and coordinate the activities of the various stakeholders within city government such as the chief of police, fire chief, city manager, and superintendent of schools, and other community stakeholders such as the Chamber of Commerce, local educational institutions, local hospitals, and emergency services, and citizens groups who are willing to help during this emergency. That is the end of the strikeout. The added language is that the city council creates a subcommittee composed of two city counselors appointed by the council to make recommendations to the city on actions to be taken in response to the coronavirus pandemic. Also added is, be it further enacted, that the city manager is authorized to spend up to $150,000 from the city's fund balance in the following categories and amounts in response to the coronavirus pandemic: Personnel, $120,000; PPE and supplies, $20,000; food, $10,000.
Do you want to take this one, Mike?
Yes. Let's put it on the floor. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to attempt to
Can I get a second on the motion to do it up?
Second.
Thank you.
I'm going to attempt to provide a summary of this amendment to that prior ordinance that we adopted Tuesday night. So it addresses three issues. Number one, as you can see from the large paragraph that's striked out, it was the scope of the committee, it wasn't in some ways clear, it was very, very, very broad. Our attorney thought that might present a problem in terms of just what this, how far this committee can go in certain directions. The second issue was that the amount specified in the original ordinance of $150,000 really wasn't specific as to what, and so that's why you see the revised one. It's broken down to personnel, costs, which we really, really believe we'll need, especially fire and police, additional costs. I mean, we hope we don't have to spend it, but that's important to have in case we need it. Personal protective gear and related supplies, $20,000 for that, and additional food costs if the city gets in a situation of helping to provide food in many different ways. There's an amount targeted for that. So the third thing, that was a second with the cost, the third thing was the number of city counselors on this committee. Bill Lee now, our city attorney, is advising that it's best if we're going to stay within the free access law for us to have two city counselors. If we have more than two, it will require a public notice for every time this subcommittee meets. So those basically are the three changes: the reduction in scope, the spelling out of what the money is for, and the reduction in size of the committee. I think you remember at one time it was proposed initially at four, it was reduced to three at the meeting on Tuesday night. Now it's proposed to be reduced to two. The other change which happened, which I think was inadvertent, about two changes inadvertently in this language, in the original language, the mayor was included as part of the group. I certainly think that should still be there, and the other change in the language was the committee was appointed by the city council chair in the original. That was changed, but not purposely in what you see.
Can I offer amendment to correct one of those two pieces of language? So the mayor will be part of the committee, and I'll be the
Any discussion?
So
Hang on.
I'm sorry.
Is this a discussion on the other?
Negative.
Can I get a roll call, Patty?
Yes. So the amendment is to add the mayor and have the council chair appoint the members. Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Smith?
I'm going to object that we didn't have discussion on this.
Well, I asked and nobody piped up, so if you would like to discuss, go ahead.
I did not hear you ask, so excuse me. Council Thomas's amendment is just to keep appointing an amendment to power for the chair of the council and simply to add the mayor to the committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, in that case, I don't think that that's a major change, so I'll be in favor of that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Council Morris?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Mayhew?
Yes.
Council Foss?
Yes.
Council Frankie?
Yes.
Council Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Can I get a motion to move this amended?
Motion made.
And Council Morris?
So I guess I have a question as to, with regard to the two versus three, because every, every other committee that we have, Finance Committee, TIF Committee, Parking Committee, you know, the Fire Committee, we have three counselors, and these folks just meet, you know, whenever.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we call a meeting, and I don't, I mean, I think anybody can come, well, I mean, I guess, I mean, I don't know, like, why is this, why is this committee different than any other committee that we have in the city now, and why do we have to make the changes?
So I agree with you, because for five years that I've been involved, the legal guidance we have had from Bill Lee has been that because three on a group of seven is not a decision-making power. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've sat in a restaurant, and there's been three counselors there, nobody made, it was only when we had four that someone made a mistake.
It's not a majority.
Right, it's not a majority. I actually disagree with this, to be honest, and I, Bill Lee is going on the advice he got from Maine Municipal, who they're not really a legal authority either, but I think for today, we just, where we basically have a local media that wants to sensationalize everything, we just want to get business done, and we can work out the semantics of this detail later, but, I mean, I
Well, I guess then, can we, I mean, having two counselors, if in the odd chance that, you know, this committee needs to schedule a meeting and one of them are not there, then, you know, can we then make an amendment to say two and an alternate, and we call in the alternate, and that way, if there's an issue with proposed meeting time for one of the two dedicated counselors, then a phone call can be made to the alternate to jump in, or, I mean, I'm just
I see Council Thomas and Frankie, so we'll take them in that order.
I wouldn't be opposed to that. I think this is another thing that we can probably clean up, given there's some more decisive legal guidance on this, so I think, either way, if we just function under this language for the next week or so, until we can get this cleared out.
Council Frankie?
Well, here is the problem I see. You've already started off, the reason we're getting bad press is because we keep doing secret means, hidden from the press. We're not allowing people to see what we're actually doing that's being good for the city. I think that going to less than three members and not being able to afford any access to the press is one of the things that has gotten us in trouble. That's where the bear is coming from.
Well
The idea of the, a secret cabal that the counselors are doing to try to get things done is just totally unsettling to me. I cannot support shrinking the size of a committee in a row.
Okay, I do want to say this. We have changed the scope of this, so it is an advisory committee. We are very clear, the committee actually can't make decisions. It is merely to advise the council, so that was one thing that we've learned. The second was, the committee is not allowed to appropriate money, because, so just like with the normal budget, we got a breakdown of expenses from our incident command center, and that now will fall under the city manager. And look, I don't mind having the press know what we're talking about. I've been going on Facebook every day, doing live videos, trying to tell people everything we're talking about, but I also don't want to be held to 24 hours advance notice, because the reality is, if we need to meet, if we need to meet, and if the Incident Command Center says, we need you guys, we need some advice, and we got something right now, like, frankly, we need to pipe in and be able to do it and not go through all the semantics of it. And from what I've heard from the public, I think the public, absolutely, we have the public support on this. Yeah? Counselor?
Yes, there's no question about the changing the authority to spend. I'm not objection to that at all. I simply think we should continue to have a three-member subcommittee that's open to the public, so people can see what we're doing, and we don't seem like we're a secret committee. That's all.
Any other discussion before we take a vote? Council Thomas?
I mean, I just want to be clear. We're not trying to keep any secrets from the public, but when we're responding to this type of situation, you know, sometimes people need to be able to freely and honestly speak their minds, and I don't want to be worried about everything that comes out of their mouth being quoted in the newspaper, and, you know, there needs to be some mechanism for us to deliberate amongst ourselves before, so we can get messaging together before it goes out to the public, you know, so that we don't look like we're scattered, and, you know, we have very strong personalities and lots And, you know, we have very strong personalities and lots of different opinions and we need to be able to have those discussions amongst ourselves so that as much as possible, we can present a united front by the time we've come to a decision. And I hope that people can look at the people who are on this committee and, you know, we're not all ideologically the same, we have very different viewpoints, and so this isn't a matter of some secret cabal of people trying to railroad through just what they want. It's serious people having serious discussions and trying to do what they think the city is.
Well, I think along that line, Counselor, you know, to me, I'm concerned that if some type of medical situation comes in, that some kind of, this has been my concern, is that some kind of fairly, like, sensitive, personally identifiable medical situation comes up. As we're speaking about a virus and infected people, potentially infected people, individuals, I just, I worry about that type of confidentiality. And again, we're not making decisions. We actually are stripping our ability to actually make decisions so that only the council, basically, we can only come back to the council and say, "Hey, we heard this new..." If we feel like there needs to be a decision made, we'll call an emergency meeting and get back to the council and the council will make all decisions. And that's what we learned with Bill today. If we're making any decisions, it's now basically a council meeting, so we've decided, well, we don't necessarily, we don't foresee the need for us to make decisions without the full council.
I think that's a good way to put it.
Yeah, I don't think we need, we don't see the need to make decisions without the full council, so I think that's really where...
So, so in context, that's what you referred it back to the last time in calling yourself an advisory panel.
Right, we're basically pushing the power back to you guys.
Yeah, exactly.
Counsel Frankie, I see your hand up.
Hold on, I just want to go back to the beginning of things earlier this week when we operated in secret, we got the bad press.
Okay, I want to rebut that. We did not operate in secret.
But the council, by creating this subcommittee, but then on Wednesday, without, excuse me, they just flashed up on the internet, excuse me. Anyway, the, on Wednesday, then we again got bad press because we operated without the press knowing what was going on. We really need to get ourselves involved so that we get, so that people understand the good things that we're doing. So had we had the press at our Wednesday meeting when the chief, our chief and police chief went through all of the things, they talked for almost an hour about all of the that we're doing in terms of being prepared for the emergency, they had never made it to the press. We missed a great opportunity and I think if we go back to not having access, giving access to the freedom of information access is open meetings, that is the way we're supposed to operate and that's the way I think we should continue to operate.
Counsel Morris and then Thomas.
Can we not just at the end of your meetings bring the press in and just give a summation of everything, just a summary of what just happened? Like, I mean, like, they do a press conference, like, you know, like, at the White House or things and, you know, everybody's back in those meetings and, you know, the press isn't there, they sit in a room and then just say, "Guys, we just came out of the meeting, at this point, this is what we're doing, this is what we're not doing," and, you know, they can certainly ask questions of the committee if they choose to and then we can move forward from there and everybody seems to be happy and... The mayor and Counsel Thomas have already been doing that because under the command system... But is the press there to ask questions and if they have questions to follow up?
We could certainly set up, I think that's an easy way to make that available.
That's a good compromise, I think.
I actually like that.
Yeah.
Right, and letting the fire chief and the police chief communicate to the press about what they're up to is completely different than them sitting in on our discussions. I agree that we need to communicate better, this hasn't even been a week yet, so let's, you know, cut some people some slack.
I know, we've been operating under duress.
It's been three days.
And really, you know, just because the local reporters have a taste for salacious headlines, I mean, that's really not a priority for me.
It's like someone said to me today, "We don't have a manual on how to run this."
Yeah, let's cut everybody some slack.
For the most part, we're not doing anything different than any other community and for some reason, we're the only ones who've been taken to task by a newspaper, so I don't understand that.
I do. All right, Mr. Foss.
And to add on that, for all that we could offer the press, we can't tell the press what to actually put in their paper. They're gonna do what they're gonna do and that's just, that's just how it is.
I like your hand up. Can I get a roll call, Patty? Oh, Counsel Frankie's got one more and then we're gonna do a roll call after this.
Just one last, just one last comment, that if you want to continue to get bad press, this is exactly the way to do it.
Okay. Can I get a roll call, Patty?
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
No.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor and one opposed.
Was there any more?
That was all of the agenda. I think...
No scheduled council meeting in the near future.
But hopefully, we're all gonna be meeting on Zoom the next time we meet.
That's the plan, so we're working on that. Hopefully, we can figure out how we can do that and allow public watching, I don't know about public participation.
So just don't forget...
I, that's next thing to do.
Actually, while we're here, while we're live streaming, I want to thank Patty. She has been running around, racing, like, in every situation where we need someone to figure it out and you've just kept us going. Thank you so much.
Well, I really need to acknowledge my staff back at City Hall and also Chad from CATV, who's been a trooper and he's really made all this happen today and also Joel, you know, our... And so, I mean, it's been quite an uphill learning curve for me personally, but I appreciate everyone's flexibility and especially losing the livestream today midway and we had to re-establish a new link and all that, so we're certainly working as best we can under some really extreme circumstances.
Without a manual to go by.
With no manual.
Yep.
Claude, got something he wants to say?
Okay.
Yes, I just would like to direct the city manager to express our appreciation to all of city employees, fire, police, school, public works, the whole crew, that the work that the city employees are doing to help us through this crisis is appreciated greatly by the city council.
Thank you, I'll do that.
And I might as well just say now, the members of the committee are gonna be myself, Counselor Foss, and the mayor.
Yeah, we're, okay. Now, we're scheduled to have that small committee meeting next, tomorrow, with a call-in number. Yep. It'll all be on the phone. I'll get back to you about how and where.
I have to go count.
Mike's gonna figure out how to get three people on a call.
Hey, I got two on today.
Right.
All right.
All right. Can I get a motion to do it your...
Thank you, Mike, that was so fun!